This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Coram of fifty being president, present, I call our Fall Special Town Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and join us if you wish. Mr. Carl Keener will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Keener. Greeting fellow citizens of Southampton. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. Welcome to our Fall 2022 Special Town Meeting. Thank you for voting me in again another year. It's a pleasure to serve you, indeed an honor, privilege. Thank you. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you by being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner/ Clerk. There is no compensation for this privilege of serving you. I no longer am a board member of the East Hampton Media nor a member of the Southampton Historical Society Board. I devote my time as clerk to Southampton Cemetery Commission for the contact for burials, requests, and all communication matters for the commission. I am not nor is the Cemetery Commission responsible for the water piping and our center cemetery is out of our hands and purview. This is a busy week, and I thank you for making tonight a priority. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday, December fourteenth, a vigil will be held in remembrance of the ten-year anniversary for the twenty-six students and teachers killed in Sandy Hook, Connecticut on December twelfth, two thousand twelve. The vigil will be held in front of First Congregational Church of Southampton from six to six-thirty p.m. On Saturday, our local Lions Club will hold their fourteenth annual Toys for Kids campaign at our gazebo from ten a.m. to two p.m. for their collection of toys. And tonight is the peak of the Jemidids meteor shower. Really awesome. Got to be in a dark place after midnight, but it's well worth it. Stay warm. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton, our legislative branch session called pursuant to a posted warrant, the official record of what will be discussed, and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may actually take action. Now, read the warrant. Warrant for the annual Special Town Meeting, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Hampshire, to either of the constables of Town of Southampton and said county greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the precincts of the Town of Southampton. County of Hampshire qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the William E. Norris Elementary School, thirty-four Palmeri Middle Road, Southampton, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, December thirteenth, at seven p.m., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof in six usual places in said town fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hear off, fail not, and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of the meeting, as aforementioned, given under our hands the twenty-second day of November in the year two thousand twenty-two, signed by the Select Board and attested by the constable. May we have a moment of silence in keeping with our tradition in Southampton for those who have left us and gone on ahead in the last year? Thank you. Tonight's Southampton Special Town Meeting is being broadcast locally on Channel one ninety-one as well as streaming on the eMedia website, easthamptonmedia.org. That link can also be found on the eMedia Facebook page and on Instagram. I'd like to thank Tim Riley, Jackson Foot, and eMedia. Watching it live on the website, there's coverage from Crooked Lead Road to Dartmouth and beyond. The warrant. Articles enter a warrant that is posted in at least five locations and warn the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. Attendance used to be mandatory and tardies were fined. It continues to be a purist form of democracy. The executive branch of a town's government, the Select Board, Finance Committee, Treasury Collector, Accountant, Clerk, Town Administrator have worked hard to create and weigh in on the articles for tonight's town meeting warrant. Their work is done. Although some of these executive branch members sit up front by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote or say tonight than any of you in our Special Town Meeting. Town moderators' rules, not town council's legal opinion, apply while our town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, a privilege, not a right, since this is not under the open meeting law, if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in the halls or aisles. The duty of the moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that you voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully, impartially, consistently, regardless of who you are, not to assure any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have opportunity and ensure the integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides need and will be heard on each article. No one has ever been denied to speak at a town meeting I have moderated. Moderator's authority is over process, not outcome. I leave the outcome to you, the fully informed voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. I help every dedicated voter as I serve the town, so if you're inexperienced here, hold your back. Allow me to walk you through the process tonight. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I will invite you to the mic, where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse it as a device to usurp the floor will be dealt with firmly. Duties of the voters, your responsibility, be the legislative branch of a town government for tonight's articles, period. You have power to make laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. The ground rules, courtesies, guidelines, important to set them early then stick with them through the meeting. Town meeting is a legislature, subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules. One of my duties as your moderator is to protect rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in time, meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary law. It's an organic process, as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Once a motion is read, and I have asked and received a second, then I invite a pro and then a con statement at the mic. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us merits or lack thereof for the motion. It's when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator. That's when the speaker is directed to sit down. Speaking at the mic. Ready to contribute something new? Please approach the mic up front, stand in line to be recognized by the moderator. First come, first heard. I recognize speakers only standing at the mic unless it's a point of order. Address the moderator, state your name and address clearly. Please direct your opinions, questions, and answers and address our remarks to me, your town moderator. Do not speak directly to other voters. This is designed to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. Town meeting conduct is the moderator's responsibility, as authorized by our general laws, Chapter thirty-seven, Subchapters fifteen and seventeen. You can speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you speak to the subject of the motion at hand and address me and not the town meeting audience. And no more than two times on any article except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before your request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise, to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. No repetition, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this and will not discourage this either, and to table or kill any motion that is legislate, all in a civilized way. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning, so let's this be our first warning. Anyone unsatisfied with the lack of information for an article may make a motion to adjourn this town meeting to a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information. Our preappointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, count resumes for a complete and accurate count to be announced out loud so all can hear. They count front to back. The right to speak, these rules of the quorum are unique to town meeting. Is there any reason to move the order of articles? None, thank you. Simply because someone states something does not make it true. Majority leaning towards approval or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. Let's create history. May I hear a motion for Article one, please? Sit down.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a total of $6,000 from the group health insurance account to the retirement expense account to complete our financial obligation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for the town.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this transfer would fund the town's fiscal year two thousand twenty-three obligation for the town's payment to the Hampshire County Retirement System. When the town received its initial letter from Hampshire County Retirement System, which we base our budget off of, the total amount was correct in that letter. However, the discounted amount, and the town chooses to pay one time upfront to take a considerable discount in the payment, there was a typographical error in that letter. It was $6,000 understated, so this $6,000 transfer would fulfill our obligation to the retirement system.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak against this motion of this article? Anyone have any comments, opinions? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article one passes unanimously. And eMedia is so efficient that they are also live streaming on YouTube right now. May I hear a motion for Article two, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $34,500 within their operating budget accounts. Thirty-two thousand from the police wage account to the police overtime account for unexpected staff shortages, and $2,500 from the police wage account to the police expense account for unexpected costs incurred. Said sums to come from the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three accounts listed.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Good evening, Ian Ilingsworth, Police Chief. This is an interdepartmental transfer of funds to balance the police department wage and expense accounts due to unexpected staffing shortages and an increase in fuel costs.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak against this motion? Any other comments, opinions? Seeing none, will vote for the motion under Article two. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article two passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article three, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate an amount totaling $68,914.80 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation and transfer $68,064 to the debt ambulance principal account and $850.80 to the debt ambulance interest account for the fiscal year twenty-three debt payment on the newest ambulance.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. I forgot to do that the first time. But this appropriation transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation will meet the our fiscal year twenty-three debt payment, both principal and interest on the newest ambulance we have, and this is the last debt payment on that ambulance that will occur in this year. I believe it's due April first.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anybody have any comments, opinions? Seeing none, will vote for the motion under Article three. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article three passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article four, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $20,000 within the assessors' operating budget accounts as listed. $5,000 from the principal assessor's salary account to the assessor consulting account for property certification. $5,000 from the principal assessor's salary account to the singular inspection account for ten-year circular inspections, and $10,000 from the principal assessor's salary account to the assessor's expense account for cost manuals and staffing from the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three accounts listed.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please? Anybody here from the Board of Assessors?
Maureen Groden, H. Earl Lane, liaison to the Board of Assessors. We currently have a vacancy in the principal assessor position, so the funds that are needed to do inspections, instead of coming from the wage account, which we don't, which is, we have plenty of money in, is going to be transferred over to the lines where we can hire a contractor to do the necessary inspections.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anyone have any comments, opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion on Article four. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article four passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $7,500 from legal expense account zero one five one five one point three zero zero to pay the settlement in the matter of Swanson versus the Town of Southampton.
Thank you. I hear a, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this article would transfer funding from our legal expense line into a settlement account to settle a employee's claim of pay disparity. This has been ongoing for a while, and by transferring the funds, this will remove this particular item from litigation.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anybody have anything to say? Opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article five. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate slash transfer $20,000 from the operational stabilization account to be used for the purposes of securing, maintaining, demolition, and/or any other necessary functions required to prepare properties for sale by the Building Department. These properties have been acquired through tax title.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, hello again.
Hi again, you're busy.
Yes. The buildings commissioner has requested this particular article. We have taken some properties into tax title, and there is one in particular in the Ponds area, I believe it's nineteen Cottage Ave., that actually, to remove the town's liability of risk from it, should be demolished. So this funding transfer would allow him to have the funds to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anyone have any comments, opinions? Step right up.
I'm not speaking in opposition, I just wonder-
Oh, just identify yourself, please.
Edward Palmer, seventy-one Glendale Road. I'm just wondering what happens to these properties that the town takes by tax title, generally speaking? Are they resold?
Okay. Ed, you want, you can do that from your mic there, Ed. You're answering a question.
If you will allow me to.
Yes?
Yes, they are usually actually auctioned off and-
A little closer, Ed.
They're usually auctioned off, and in some particular cases, they may not have any value except to the neighbors. But yes, usually they would be auctioned off.
Can I answer your question? Great. Anyone else? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article six. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article six passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article seven, please?
Maureen Groden, H. Earl Lane. Motion for Article seven. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from community preservation surcharges to the Southampton Greenway for the town's local matching share of a Mass Trails grant for the design process of the Greenway bicycle and pedestrian path. Said funds to be taken from community preservation surcharges, undesignated funds.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this? Reenie?
Mr. Moderator, this particular article would allow appropriation of funds from the Community Preservation Fund to our required local match for a Mass Trails grant, which we have received. We've received a total of, I think it's $400,000 for design work for the Greenway, and our required match is the $100,000. And if, just to let everybody know that we are planning and expecting to actually close on the acquisition of the Greenway right away before the end of this calendar year. So in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Any other comments? Step right up to the mic.
Hello, Mark Cassis, nineteen Fomer Road. I'm speaking as a member of the Greenway Committee. As was mentioned, this is important, matching funds. We've already obtained a grant for $400,000 from the state for required design phase. Without this, $100,000, we'll lose that money. And also that the design needs to be completed to receive what has been potentially promised of $6 million from the state to construct the Greenways bicycle path. So if we don't go ahead with this, we're in essence for not, by not providing the $100,000, losing almost six and a half million dollars. So I think this is important for the town, the quality of life, as well as development.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article seven? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article seven passes unanimously, and I have a comment. I have a comment on the motion for Article six. We needed two-thirds majority by you voting unanimously. We have met our two-thirds requirement. Thank you. May I hear a motion for Article eight, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,000 from community preservation surcharges to the Park Commission for the acquisition of one additional Conan Park sign, and funds to be taken from community preservation surcharges, open space recreation account.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
This is to purchase another Conan Park sign that is exactly the same as the sign that was put on Route ten. This sign will be on East Street entrance to Conan Park.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anybody else? Step right up to the mic. Oh, you've been here before.
I watched The Voice last night. Kid had trouble with the mic. I'm Todd Barron, one hundred Gun Road. I just have a question to clarify these buckets that appear in the CPA funds. The prior warrant article mentioned that the funds would come from undesignated funds. This is coming from open space recreation. So I'm just curious why the prior, and I realize we passed the prior article and I voted for it, but could somebody clarify the buckets for CPA, please?
We clarify them annually at the annual town meeting, but I can have somebody give a summary of them for you, if I may now.
Perfect.
Who would like to step up and? Virginia A. Hart, Chair, Community Preservation Committee. I'll lower that also too, thanks.
Community preservation law indicates-
We have to identify who you are and your street address, even though I did, sorry.
Virginia A. Hart, twenty-seven Fomer Road.
Thank you.
And I've been on the community preservation for a long time. Yeah, there are three designated areas, and those are areas that, when the state gives us our matching grant every year, have to have one-third of the funds put into them. They are open space recreation, historical preservation, and it's padded dozen different names. The affordable housing, community housing, it keeps changing its name. If the funds don't go into those three, then they are considered undesignated and can be used in any one of those three areas.
Is that good for you?
Any other questions?
Can I answer your question?
What?
What determines the undesigned?
Undesignated simply means that that is not required- Undesignated simply means that that is not required to be held for one of the other three.
And if I add in, if I said it and you didn't, I didn't hear it, there's 10% in each of the three?
There has to be 10%.
Minimum.
In each of the three. The committee can also take a small amount for their use. The rest is placed in undesigned, but it can only be used in one of those three categories. So when you have a big item, like the one, the first one, we look to the undesigned. And when you have a small one, like one extra sign, we would take it out of the open space recreation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Virginia. Anybody else want to speak on the motion for Article 8? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 8 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 9, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town delete Articles 12, Matter on Public Ways or Places, and Article 20, Littering of the Town's General Bylaws, and adopt a new Article 12, Littering and Dumping Materials on Public Ways or Places, with the language contained in Article 9 of the December 13, 2022 Special Town Meeting, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes resulting from the deletion of Article 20, if any.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Francine, you going to give a general? Want to do it now? Chris? Hold a sec. Just have a seat over there. Francine Tishman asked if she could give a generalized statement regarding all the bylaws, what the bylaws committee has done and why, and I agreed before Chris explained the motion.
Thank you. Francine Tishman, 83 Glendale Road. The responsibility of the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee is to review and update existing bylaws, eliminate bylaws that are no longer relevant, and draft new bylaws to address current and necessary state and local matters. One of the major objectives of the committee is to make certain that the process is transparent and the language and organization of the bylaws are simplified for easier use and access. First of all, I want to assure residents that the bylaws you are about to consider tonight are not written or revised solely by the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee, but rather are the product of many hours of researching Massachusetts general law, and most importantly, working in close collaboration with relevant town departments, committees, and boards to gather their input and ensure their agreement with the bylaw contents. In some instances, the committee also conducted public meetings to gather resident input on topics such as soliciting and canvassing, and dogs, which you'll be voting on tonight. In a few instances, the proposed bylaws were brought forward by a town committee or by a town resident. And finally, before bringing them to a town vote, the draft bylaws are reviewed and approved by the Select Board and the town's legal council to ensure compliance with Massachusetts general law. The bylaw committee follows this process to ensure that the bylaws you're voting on tonight represent the collective issues and interests essential to the operation of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Francine. Chris, thanks for your patience.
Mr. Moderator, Chris Fowles, Member of the Select Board and also the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee. This bylaw, as stated, basically combines two bylaws that were basically about one paragraph long at most, couple of sentences each of them, that were not very detailed and were quite outdated in terms of what they could cover, as well as the penalties set forth. So what has been proposed is to combine these two bylaws that were called littering and matter on public ways and places into a new bylaw, and then that eventually essentially deletes both of those old bylaws. So this would replace the two existing bylaws and update them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anybody have any comments? Opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article 9? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 9 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 10, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws, Article 15, Section 5A and Section 5C, application for permit by deleting language shown as strike-through and adding new language in boldface type, as contained in Article 10 of the December 13, 2022 Special Town Meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Ian Ellingsworth, Police Chief. This is an administrative amendment at the suggestion, or I should say, at the direction of the Attorney General's Office of the already existing article relative to a schedule of fees and violations that are less ambiguous.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anybody have any comments? Opinions? Seeing? Go ahead.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I just have a question. Who's responsible for collecting the fines? If they're imposed?
Ian, you want to answer that?
Where does the money go into, like, what fund if there's a fine collected?
Thank you.
The fines and the fees are issued by the police department, and provided that they are found responsible, it would go to the town. The funds would go to the town, and the fees for the processing of the permits would go to a special account to provide supplies for those permits.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? Great. Good. Thank you again. Anyone else? Seeing none, will vote. Motion under Article 10? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 10 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 11, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws by deleting Articles 9, Dog Kennels, and Article 16, Dogs, of the town's general bylaws, and adopt a new Article 16, Dogs, colon, Licenses, Kennels, and Complaints, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes resulting from the deletion of Article 9, if any, as contained in Article 11 of the December 13, 2022 Special Town Meeting.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Francine Tishman, 83 Glendale Road. This proposed bylaw consolidates two existing bylaws to make it easier for residents to access all information, is there feedback? Related to dogs, dog licenses, kennels, and complaints into one bylaw, which will help to simplify access to and the organization of our general bylaws. The information is updated to bring our dog bylaw into compliance with 2022 Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Dog Regulations. Our last update was in 2017. Some of the language in the bylaw was revised to make it more comprehensible by residents. For example, the current version references a "dog at large," meaning a dog off-leash. This revision includes requirements that are not specified by existing, by the existing bylaw. For example, dates and timelines for dog licenses and the requirement to maintain current vaccinations, et cetera. Specific processes for maintenance and inspection of dog kennels are also included in this version. The bylaw also contains information specifying the process to file complaints, along with timelines by which those complaints will be addressed. This revised version authorizes the police department and the animal control officer to enforce this bylaw and specifies corresponding penalties for violations. Applicable mass general law citations are included to make it easier for residents to go to the source, so to speak. Overall, while this revision is much longer than our current one, it does specify requirements in greater detail and provides more of a one-stop source of information for dog owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this motion? Anybody have any comments? Opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article 11? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 11 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 12, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws and amend the town bylaw number 26, Curb Cuts, by deleting language shown as strike-through and replacing it with a new language in bold.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, I'll speak in lieu of the highway superintendent.
Yeah, okay.
Can I do it up there?
Thank you.
Chris Fowles, Member of the Bylaw Advisory Committee. This is just a simplification of the, and clarification of the current bylaw by adding in a little bit more definition of what a curb cut is, so that it's more clear to everybody, and it's also more enforceable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anyone have any opinions? Any comments? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article 12? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 12 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move, to see if the town, oh, sorry. I move that the town will vote to adopt a new general bylaw, marking of town-owned vehicles as listed in Article 13 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant of December 13, 2022, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes, if any, to the general bylaws resulting from the addition of this new bylaw.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Select Board and myself, I actually thought that it would be important to have all town vehicles labeled as Town of Southampton with a town seal or some other mannerism on it in a uniform manner, especially in today's world, so that our residents and our businesses would actually know if, you know, whether it's a highway truck, or a water department truck, or a fire truck coming to inspect their smoke detectors, or their water meters, or whatever, that the individuals that were coming to their home or their neighborhood were actually there and were these, this equipment and the people in them were actually town employees.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Anybody have any comments? Opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article 13? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 13 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), and adopt the following general bylaw establishing the Southampton Affordable Housing Trust, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes, if any, to the general bylaws resulting from the addition of this new bylaw.
Motion made. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Joy Piper, 61 Gun Road, Member of Housing Authority and the Select Board. Mr. Moderator, this bylaw will create an affordable housing trust that will hold in direct funds and property for the purposes of creating affordable housing in the town in line with statewide housing goals. This trust will consist of a five-member board. Currently, the Town of Southampton is well below the 10% affordable housing required by the state, and currently we only have about 2%. Creating more affordable housing in the town was a high priority for the town in its housing production plan, and also a goal outlined in the master plan updated in 2021. This affordable housing trust would be a strong tool in facilitating that goal and using funds from CPA or donations in order to create affordable housing and to work through the very fast-paced real estate market.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this article?
I can speak in favor.
And go ahead. Anybody seeing none that are speaking in opposition so far? Anybody is welcome to the mic. You're good.
Yeah. This is Todd Barron, Gun Road, Southampton. I'm speaking in favor of the warrant as well. Affordable housing is a critical need, and what we have in Southampton is a significant amount of money that's been put aside from our tax revenue to the, one of the funds of the CPA, which is affordable housing. There is in excess, as I understand it, of $400,000. This fund has been built up over the course of 10 years. We are under a state mandate to do something with affordable housing. If we don't do something as a town, developers can come in and utilize a rather interesting exclusion from the essentially estate housing programs, which allows them to propose a development and sort of steamroll it through. So by setting up this affordable housing trust, I think what it gives us is a really vital and obvious institutionalized way to help us figure out what we're going to do with those affordable housing funds, and to really move us forward and build some affordable housing. Thank you.
Jane Rothschild, 13 Cold Spring Road. I'm not in favor or opposed. I have a question for clarification, because I noticed in the article, it identifies the members of the board to be appointed by the Select Board that will be municipal employees, and I'm wondering if someone could clarify whether they will be compensated, how they'll be compensated? Will that money come out of the trust funds or out of the general fund of the town?
Thank you. Would like to answer that.
Joy Piper, Housing Authority and Select Board. The members will not be compensated. It was considered a volunteer board, and they will be considered much like the volunteer boards that currently run the town.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? Oh, go ahead.
Joy Piper, Housing Authority. I do want to clarify. There is a section in there that mentions that the fund is able to fund itself if needed for administrative needs and legal fees, et cetera, but that would be, that would come from the funds that are already, would be in the trust. It would not come from any town funds.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. As a resident, I speak in favor of creating the housing trust. I'm also a member of the Planning Board, and I'd like to report that at the most recent Planning Board meeting, we voted unanimously to support this. The Planning Board in recent months has been working hard on making, considering zoning bylaw changes that would ultimately support opportunities for more affordable housing in our town. We know this is a big need, so the Planning Board totally supports the creation of the trust fund. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Sheehan, 127 Palmeroy Meadow Road. I also am speaking in favor of this motion. Mr. Moderator, my understanding is we have only 2% of our houses meet the state requirement for affordable housing. The state requirement is 10%, a minimum of 10%. So we are one of the lowest towns in the Commonwealth for having affordable housing. My understanding is also that we could be denied state funding because we don't meet the state requirement of 10%. And so this makes a lot of sense to me, to have a five-member board, you know, of qualified people to handle all this. It's too much to deal with at town meetings. It's a haphazard way to do it. So I strongly urge everyone to support this motion.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Share their opinions?
Maureen Groh, Nature Lane. I'm in support of this. I just want to make a couple of points. It's very difficult with the housing market as it is for people, particularly people that were born and raised in Southampton, to stay in town. It's an expensive community, and it's very difficult for people that are young to buy a house right now, given what they're dealing with financially. The other point I wanted to make is that any money that comes from community preservation, the housing, affordable housing bucket still has to be voted by town meeting to make it available to the housing trust. So it's still a town meeting vote for money to leave the community preservation, which is a surcharge on taxes, to go into the housing trust. That's still going to be subject to town meeting vote. And the third thing I wanted to say is that our town has a bylaw that says that any development that the... That after nine houses, that the 10th house has to be an affordable house. And so the Housing Authority has worked really, really hard over the years to try to move forward on affordable housing in town, and this would go a long way to help affordable housing in Southampton.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 14. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 14 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 15, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt a new general bylaw, Article 15, a humane care and... Wait, 16. A humane care and treatment of domesticated animals as printed in Article 15 of the December 13, 2022 special town meeting, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes, if any, to the general bylaws resulting from the addition of this new bylaw.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
This is the last time, I promise. Thank you. Francine Tishman, 83 Glendale Road. This bylaw is not currently part of Southampton's existing general bylaws. However, it is a regulation that already exists as part of Massachusetts General Law, 140, Sections 136(a) and 174(e), which basically ensure that domesticated animals will receive appropriate and sufficient feeding, care, shelter, and protection. It addresses violations that include abandonment, as well as pets left in cars when the weather is too hot or too cold. It also addresses animals left outside for extended period of time when no one is home to monitor them. This bylaw also assigns the enforcement authority to the police department and the animal control officer and specifies the penalties for violations. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion?
I'm not speaking in opposition. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Good. He'll cling to the mic all for you then.
David Sullivan, Sixland Drive. I'm not speaking in opposition to this motion, but I do have one concern with Section 4, that portion of animals left outside for extended periods of time, keeping or other individuals not at home for the monitor. My only concern is a lot of people in this town, and we're still a farmer in town, own cats, and they leave their cats outside, their indoor/outdoor cats. I had one for 20 years. Loved my cat very much, but he loved to be outside. So is this going to be a fine given to somebody if this cat wanders onto somebody else's property?
Would like to answer that?
My interpretation of this would be no, that that wouldn't... I'm sorry. My interpretation of this...
A little closer.
It's an excellent question. Thinking about it because they...
I think it needs a little more clarification, because I have a neighbor who leaves his dog out all night long, and it drives me crazy. I understand what the intent is, but can it be viewed upon as, well, this person left their cat out, so they get a $50 fine?
I... Yeah. It is defined as a domesticated animal. I don't know if you consider overnight an extended period of time.
Well, I mean, some people leave their cats during the summer out all day long. They come back at night.
Get a... Get closer to the mic so we can pick you up.
Yeah, some people leave their cats out all day long. They'll leave for work in the morning. The cat enjoys to be outside. A lot of farm owners have barn cats, and they spend their whole life outside, pretty much, so.
I hear you.
Ian, you want to speak?
Ian Ellingsworth, Police Department, Police Chief, rather. I think what's most important here, the language where it says, "could reasonably be expected to threaten the health of the animal." So outdoor cats being left outdoors really doesn't threaten the health. If it is going to be, say, an extremely cold night, well, then yes, that could be interpreted as a violation of this. However, and generally speaking, that would not... I would not consider that a violation, because cats do have the ability to care for themselves, outdoor cats in particular. But like I said, I think the language specific to "could reasonably be expected to threaten the health of the animals" is what we would focus on.
Thank you.
And one of the things, actually, we were referencing...
We got to get closer. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's the caller of the mic, not you.
Actually, one of the things that we were thinking of in referencing animals being outdoors for extended period of time when no one was home to monitor them was really thinking of some farm animals and so forth that might wander off the property, and if there was no one at home, they wouldn't realize that they were out. And that was really the intent of that section of the bylaw.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Jess McConnell, 24 High Street. That might be an issue, because not all animals in town are located at an owner's home. So, for example, there's a field across the street from my house that's in the center of town where there are cows. That's not any... It's an open... It's a field for rent, so to speak, and so those cows don't have someone immediately there. And they do occasionally get out, and, you know, people are aware of that. So I don't... I would hate to think that the farmer finds themselves in violation of this law when it's... I mean, and that can't be the only location in town that's the case.
Thank you.
Oh, Chris, do you want it? Oh, Ian again?
Ian.
Thank you.
Ian Ellingsworth, Police Chief. I can certainly recognize where that would be a concern. We've had situations in the past where we've actually had people make reports about farm animals being in the elements, as well as certain dogs. And we've reached out to the MSPCA, and there are certain qualifications that farmers have to have, some form of a wind shelter, if you wish, for farm animals. So there are criteria that we actually... They have to meet for that land that the cows at least have or farm animals have accessibility to. And we wouldn't, as a police department, just find somebody. We would look... We would investigate this, reach out to the resources that have more knowledge on this, and they would determine whether or not those animals would be at risk.
Thank you. Just to answer your question? Good. Thanks.
John Lumber, Board Select Board, 318 College Highway. I would just reference on that previous question, Section 2. Domesticated animals for the purposes of this bylaw are defined by the Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife, 321 CMR 9.02, subsection 3, and shall include, without limitations, dogs, cats, or any animal which is kept for companionship, entertainment, or service of livelihood. So I think the farm animals would be excluded from this bylaw.
Very well put. Anyone else? Comments? Opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 15. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 15 passes unanimously, and that concludes our business for the evening. Thank you. You've been a lovely audience. I'd love to take you home with me, but I'm not. May I entertain a motion now to dissolve our special town meeting? All those in favor, aye. Opposed? This special town meeting is hereby dissolved. I'd like to thank Carl Keener for cleaning your mics for us, Ms. Lucy Dalton, our town clerk, Ian, our officer, and Tim Riley in Jackson Foot. Thank you from E Media. Safe home.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.